Adrian N. Breitfelder, City Clerk, you are here but directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for January 21st, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmembers Farber, Jones, Resnick, Rousell, Sprank, Wethel, City Manager Van Milligan, and City Attorney Bremwell. Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, our consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 1 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually?
No input.
All right, thank you. Back to the table then. Ms. Wethel?
Yes, I'd like to reserve number 19 for separate discussion, please.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 19.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. So for number 19, I'll entertain a motion, please, to get it on the table.
I would like to make a motion to discuss separately number 19.
I can second that.
And actually, if you want to make the motion to, for the suggested disposition of receiving, file, and approve, and then we'll just get it on the table, and then we can have the discussion.
Yeah, suggested. I'm sorry.
It's just, it'd be this one right here.
Oh, just to receive and file and approve?
Okay. Motion to receive and file and approve.
Second.
And I got a motion by Wethel, second by Sprank. Okay. And to you, Ms. Wethel.
Thank you. I just wanted to get a sense, and we don't do it very often, where we add an FTE outside of budget. And so I just wanted to discuss, as we are getting closer to discussing budget, the decision as a council, and how maybe each of you feel about adding FTEs in the middle of a year, not considering it to budget, versus having those positions discussed at budget. And it's just out of, really, a curiosity more generally, rather than related to this specific item.
Okay. Well, I'd actually, I mean, Mike, this is a request that's coming directly from you and staff. Maybe we come to you first to talk about it a little bit, and then we can, that'd be okay, Ms. Wethel?
Sure, sure.
And we can have more discussion around that?
Yes, thank you. So it is highly unusual for me to recommend mid-year to add positions. We have had to do it several times in the last, I'd say, four to five years. And it's because when we identify a need, sometimes it can't wait for the budget, or at least I believe it can't wait for the budget process. So let's use this particular position as an example. When Ariel Swift, who was the former Assistant Public Works Director, became the Public Works Director a few years ago, trying to act on the idea of being data-driven, she wanted to create a position in the Public Works Department of a data scientist. And so in my discussions with her about how could we afford to do that, she's offered up that we could eliminate the Assistant Public Works Director position that she had just vacated as she became the Public Works Director, and she believed that having the data scientist and Ariel's ample skill set, that they could operate that very large, sophisticated department in that manner. And what we've identified is, it really can't be done. It's a situation where they have so many people, so many activities, so many critical and important projects to do, that it needs the dedication of a director and then some other high-level administrative position. So as we came to that determination in late 2024, I thought that the need was important enough from a timeliness perspective that we should come to you in mid-year. And you'll see that this is not recommending to recreate the Assistant Public Works Director position. It's to create a different type of position, which is a project and facilities manager. So as you're very aware, that the Public Works Department, extremely critical component for any local government, does have a lot of individual projects. Like, just use, for example, the 10 Mile Street Program. Let me tell you, that's not easy to pull off. But they have a lot of other things. You know, they maintain the sanitary sewer system. They pick up the refuse. They operate the landfill. They have a lot of responsibilities, but also they support other departments. So they do all the vehicle maintenance for the other departments, like the fire department, the police department, and go on and on. They also provide all the fuel for all the vehicles in our entire fleet: trucks, construction equipment, cars. And in both of those examples, those are things that we just completed a consultant analysis of our whole vehicle maintenance system. So we've got to look at implementing that study, which is, you know, going to be time-consuming and challenging, and we want to do it right. And then at the same time, we have our fuel system, which failed earlier this year. And so we were having all of our vehicles' fuel at local fuel stations, privately-owned fuel stations, at a much greater cost than we normally can buy our fuel and dispense it for. And so now we're going to be doing an over-a-million-dollar project to revamp our fuel system, so we won't be dealing with that. And when you're in the midst of winter, which is, you know, one of our other big responsibilities is plowing snow and handling ice storms, I just felt like implementing the study related to the vehicle maintenance for our entire fleet, including fire engines and police cars, and revamping our entire fuel system that fuels our entire fleet, including fire engines and police cars, and all of our public works equipment, and carrying on all the other duties that we have on a routine basis, which are immense and complicated, that I didn't want to wait to go through the budget process, knowing that that would mean we'd be looking about four months down the road before we even knew if it got approved, and then would have to start probably a three-month recruitment process. So we'd be looking at next fall before we'd have this position filled. All those things would have still needed to get done in a timely manner while you're operating the entire department. And I just didn't think it would work. And so I felt I had an obligation to come forward now and say, "I appreciate the fact that Ariel tried to make it work by trading off the assistance position for the data scientist, but I don't think it did work." And I think we've got to recognize that and step up and get this department fully staffed so it can perform the important functions that it's required to perform.
Thanks, Mike, for that context. Ms. Wethel, did you want anything?
Yeah, I think the setting of someone who is trying to dial in how we can make things run efficiently, and then reassessing and saying, "These are the needs of my department that I think we need to meet, and this is what I need to meet them." I appreciate that. I appreciate the first movement of the thought that went into her initial decision, and then this one as well. I think more broadly, I appreciate that there is a reason that we're doing this now, not at budget. And I think that's one thing moving forward, is that I want people to know that we don't just throw an FTE in our routine meetings to add a person to our staff. We do it very rarely, but when we do it, we do it with quite a bit of intention. So. Anyone else have a thought about that?
Yeah, I'll jump in. I think, first of all, I appreciate you asking this question. I think it's a good one to ask, especially publicly, so people have a sense of how this all works when we're doing this. Because we do, I mean, we go through a very extensive process, from a budgetary standpoint, to talk about every single full-time employee that we're going to be adding, or taking away, or doing those different things. We go through the budget process. But just like any other business, there are things that happen, and you have to deal with those things when they come along. And I think that Mike just gave us a really good description of how that looks. And I guess what I would also encourage people to do is, because I think it's totally fair to have questions, but there's a lot of detail in the memos that we receive about why things are on our agenda. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to be able to point to those when people do have questions about certain staffing decisions or things like that, you know, whether they land in the consent agenda, or action items, or anything like that. I think it's good to have all that detail in there. I think it's helpful to know most of the story, and then we can get a little bit more of the story when we talk about it here, because I think we did, you know, we got a little more of the background on how this came about. But there are definitely reasons to add staff at different times of the year outside of the budget process, and I think that we should always be open to that possibility, and make sure that we're, you know, running things as efficiently and effectively as we possibly can as a city. So those are my thoughts, I guess, on the matter. Ms. Farber?
I just wanted to say that I am and appreciate the discussion that the city manager uses to make these decisions, and that I'm very confident that it's as needed, as required, and based on what we're doing, when we're doing it, and how we're doing it. So thank you, Mike, for teeing this up, because it seems like it is very important to get this done now. And the budget information is within, we're very transparent about that, but it's not something that I think we need to be overly concerned about in that respect for the budget this year. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick?
When we approve a budget, then that amount of money is set. I mean, it's not going to cost us more. So you have to have some flexibility to manage. So I understand, and I've spoken often about how we've grown as far as the number of employees. We have been really efficient in the way we've been dealing with things, and sometimes, as the city manager talked about tonight, we have to make decisions right now. And, you know, so it doesn't really affect the bottom line as far as what we're spending this year. We're not going to be spending much next year either. I think we've been, you know, tethered, and we're going to be tapering for quite a while now. So I'm glad that this need is being met as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones?
Just my personal observation from the solid waste meetings are at the Public Works facility. And every time that we need Ariel to be in one of our meetings, she's working on three or four other things on her laptop. She's obviously running beyond capacity and getting her done. And I'm glad that this has been seen and being rectified.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Mr. Sprank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as for Public Works, I usually, I go to work at 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning, so I usually see the trucks all day long. I drive around town, I see the trucks. I just can't remember, Mike, if you had a percentage-wise, how many, what's the percentage of employees that work for Public Works that are in that department? Isn't it about a quarter, a third of the entire city's?
Probably about 20%, 20 to 25%.
Of 1,400 employees?
No. I'm talking about our full-time workforce. Permanent full-time workforce would be just over 600. We have 1,000 employees. We've got our seasonal and all that, things that we have to bring out in the summer to run, and all those things. But yeah, so you could kind of compare the fire, police, and public works all to each other based on staffing levels.
So, and they have that many people? They need that much help. So I get it. It makes sense. I work in construction. We see projects where all of a sudden we need a bunch of people. We need a bunch of people. So I'm glad that she came, that Ariel asked for one, asked for the help when she needs it. So I have no problem with this.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wethel, for bringing it up. I think it's a good discussion to have, and a good thing to be pointing out. I think it's always good to talk about why we make the decisions we make, and how those decisions come about. Not that we've decided on this yet, because we do still need to vote on it, but I do think that, you know, to be able to have these discussions openly, it is helpful to be able to be more transparent about the process and remind people kind of how things are working. But thank you for asking the question. All right, the motion on the table is to receive and file and approve, and we have a motion and a second. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next, our items set for public hearing. We have one: I'm on Ice Arena dehumidification system upgrade project. Initiate public bidding process and setting date for a public hearing for February 3rd, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolution, and set the public hearing for February 3rd.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next, our boards and commissions. We have appointments for the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board, Community Development Advisory Commission, and the Equity and Human Rights Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. So for the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board, we have one three-year term through January 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Michael Shimkus. So I will entertain a motion here, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to appoint Michael Shimkus to the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board for one three-year term through January 27.
Thank you, Ms. Rousell.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. I'll entertain a motion on the second term, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
I move that Dean Bowles be reappointed to the three-year term through February 15th, 2028.
Second. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. I'll entertain a motion on the second term, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
I move that Dean Bowles be reappointed to the three-year term through February 15th, 2028.
Second. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
So Rick Baumhover is appointed to one of the three-year terms through January 1st, 2028. And Adrian, we can call the roll for the second term, please.
Resnick.
Tracy Phillipsen.
Kavanaugh.
Michaela Freiberger.
Farber.
Michaela Freiberger.
Sprank.
Rick Baumhover.
Rousell.
Rick Baumhover.
Jones.
Rick Baumhover.
Wethel.
Rick Baumhover.
So Rick Baumhover is appointed to one of the three-year terms through January 1st, 2028. And Adrian, we can call the roll for the second term, please.
Resnick.
Tracy Phillipsen.
Kavanaugh.
Michaela Freiberger.
Farber.
Michaela Freiberger.
Sprank.
Michaela Freiberger.
Rousell.
Michaela Freiberger.
Jones.
Michaela Freiberger.
Wethel.
Michaela Freiberger.
So Michaela Freiberger is appointed to the second term for the Equity and Human Rights Commission.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to, and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is Central Avenue and White Street Corridor Traffic Study Summary Report Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank?
A motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second by Wethel.
I've got a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. I do think, I think we just have one resolution there. I heard, I heard an S on the end there, Mr. Sprank, but just to be, just to clarify the motion. Okay.
Resolution.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Soias is recommending City Council adopt a resolution approving the Central Avenue and White Street Corridor Traffic Study Summary Report and adopting the multimodal alternative as the selected alternate, which will function as a guide in the city's long-term master plan for the redevelopment and revitalization of the Central Avenue and White Street corridors, in conjunction with the previously adopted Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape Master Plan. The final summary report is a technical report that documents the analysis, conceptual design layouts, planning level cost estimates, preferred alternative conceptual design, and a potential implementation phasing plan for Central Avenue and White Street corridors. The phasing plan is subject to future City Council decisions on funding. A presentation video will be shown during the public hearing, which will act as a visual guide to the final summary report, and there also will be presentation made. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Karen, real quick, do we, should we leave the presentation and things first before I open for public comment? Having a moment here.
Yes, that's how I would do it.
Okay, thank you so much. So I will, I would invite the presentation to come on up. I know there's, it sounds like there's a video and a presentation first, and then we'll have-
Just a video.
Just a video. All right, so we'll do, we'll just do the video. So, yep, we can, we can roll that video, and then we'll open up for public comment for the public hearing. Thank you.
For over 150 years, Central Avenue, White Street, and the Washington neighborhood have been a backbone of our community. Together, residents, business owners, community members, and our freight industry came together to reimagine these streets for the future. Look forward to a Main Street feeling with the rejuvenation of spaces to allow our community to thrive, local businesses to flourish, and neighbors to connect. Based on extensive meetings, public engagement surveys, and past planning efforts, your vision of these streets came into focus. In the coming years, over several phases, a new Central Avenue and White Street will emerge, one that welcomes everyone, whether walking, biking, driving, or taking the bus, while still accommodating our industrial economy and freight carriers. Imagine better sidewalks, safer crosswalks, and more greenery, all with the goal of rejuvenating the neighborhood and supporting our residents and local businesses. Central Avenue and White Street will see a myriad of improvements aimed at making this corridor an anchor of downtown Dubuque. As you enter White Street, you'll see curb bumpouts at the intersections, allowing pedestrians to cross quickly and safely. They'll also narrow the roadway and reduce speeding, making the streets safer for everyone. If you're on a bike on White Street, you'll be happy to see a raised, dedicated, two-way cycle track, level with the sidewalk on the west side of the street, allowing you to ride safely away from cars and making it easier to get to where you need to be. The design for White Street includes a wide sidewalk, a raised cycle track, two northbound travel lanes, an on-street parking lane, trees or other landscaping, and a buffer area. Driving along White Street, there will be traffic calming infrastructure to curb speeding while keeping vehicles flowing smoothly and efficiently. area and the new shared-use path out to Chaplin Schmidt Island. North of Seventeenth Street, the design continues. Here, as well as the length of the street, there will be a buffer zone between the travel lanes and cycle track and sidewalk. This could be grass and trees and residential areas, or pavers and hardscaping in other settings. The finishings for this buffer zone will be designed based on the surrounding land use. At Nineteenth Street, the raised cycle track ends and transitions to on-street shared bike infrastructure, providing access to the future bike facility on Elm Street, along with access to the North End Neighborhood Trail and Comiskey Park. Central Avenue will also see a number of improvements aimed at making the experience for everyone, whether you're moving by car, bus, or bike, more comfortable and inviting. As a pedestrian on Central Ave., you'll find wider, more spacious sidewalks and easier crossings to make your journey on foot safer and that much more pleasant. The plans for this section include a wide sidewalk with room for outdoor dining, a landscaped buffer, two southbound travel lanes, an on-street parking lane, and a sidewalk with trees in tree wells. The plans for Central Avenue in this area include a wide sidewalk, trees and landscaping, an on-street parking lane, two southbound travel lanes, and a landscaped buffer. Wider sidewalks will provide outdoor dining opportunities and a comfortable walking environment to visit a variety of local restaurants and businesses. Freight and civilian drivers alike will experience smooth traffic flows, while these improvements help to create a safe Additional greenery, trees, and opportunities for public art will bring a sense of place to the corridor and provide an attractive boost to downtown. So Dubuque, let's do this. Together, let's create a Central Avenue and White Street that mixes Dubuque's history with its exciting future. Feel free to share this video with friends and neighbors, and reach out to the city with questions or comments. For more information and to sign up for our news and alerts, visit the project website at www.cityofdubuque.org/CentralWhite. That's
All right, so it was just a video. Okay. Well, we are in a public hearing to consider City Council adopt a resolution approving- Well, we are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution approving the Central Avenue and White Street Corridor Traffic Study Summary Report and adopting the multimodal alternative as the selected alternate, which will function as a guide and the, and the city's long-term master plan for the redevelopment and revitalization of the Central Avenue and White Street corridors, in conjunction with the previously adopted Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape Master Plan. Do we have anyone here from the public to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually? All right, thank you.
No input.
And no input from the city clerk's office? Okay, back to the table then for any discussion. Ms. Russell?
I'll just say that I think the, the video gives a great summary of the many benefits that will come with this new plan and all the thought that has gone into it and all of the parties that have been part of the planning process. I really, I thought it was very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mr. Sprank?
I know that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we've been talking about this for quite some time, so I'm looking forward that it's finally moving forward in one direction, so I'm okay with this, so looking forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have, I have a question, or maybe also a statement. It's still my understanding that not everything in this plan, even if we adopt this tonight as the study and the general guide moving forward, not everything is set completely in stone. We still have a lot of decisions to make. We need to decide on funding for each of these different aspects of this. We need to decide on, you know, I'm thinking of the Eighteenth Street Plaza as the one thing that people keep bringing up as a possibility that this might not be something that works exactly as designed. What kind of possibilities for more public input and discussion are going to be available as we move forward with each of the different aspects of this over the next few years? And Mike, I'm kind of looking in your, your direction more at this point?
Sure, it's not just funding decisions that you have to make along the way, which will be really important and will help determine the timing, but on all projects that we bid, you have to improve the plans and specifications. Those require public hearings and input at that time, so there'll be plenty of opportunities along the way to get, get more input about individual project components and what they'll look like, things like that, how, how they'll function.
Yep. Thank you. I, I do think with that, though, it's important that we also say that we are getting closer, very close, to the final look of what this is going to look like eventually. As we make each of these, this series of decisions on moving forward with this, we've, we've chosen, we've already pointed out as a council that we want this, this general option, as the, the multimodal option that we've chosen. We've already pointed out that that's what we want to go with. This is going to further solidify that as the instruction to the rest of the, the city staff to move forward with actually building some of that and doing that, designing, I should say, building what we build around the design that we've chosen. So we are getting closer and closer as we have these discussions. And now it's going to be piece by piece, putting this together to make it look the way that we've, we've been shown here on a video like this and all the different discussions that we've had throughout this whole process. Ms. Farber?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that I think there is a theme that was interwoven in all the documentation, and that was that there was going to be more parking, more green space, more sidewalk, more bike lanes, more bike parking, and then the discussion on the Plaza Square. And I just think that it's a real opportunity for the city to kind of refresh and to basically create the new connections and the new ambiance, if you will, for these neighborhoods. And I think it's just, it's just really nicely coming together. And then I do agree on the phased-in approach, where we will be able to tweak it and have conversation as we go from one year to the next, because this is a multi-year project, and nothing happens at the beginning that can't change if we so desire going forward. So I very much appreciate the fact that it is phased in. It is an enormous project with 38 intersections and that 44 blocks that you had talked about. So there's a lot of complications going on. But what I think is also interesting is that it's for 2,000 residents that live in that area, and hopefully more to come as we expand. And I think the economic development goes without, without saying, because there will be more apartments and more livelihood, more businesses. And I just think it's really going to be a nice economic engine for that group. So, thank you, I very much appreciated all these connections that were discussed in the presentation. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Farber. Any other discussion before we move on? Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation, Sixteenth Street Detention Basin, Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Russell, second by Jones, Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Soias is recommending city council approve on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and construction estimate of $25,400,000 for the Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation, or Sixteenth Street Detention Basin, project. The proposed Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation project involves construction of a new pump station that includes the following elements: new floodgates, replacement of the two existing flood pumps with four new pumps, replacement and updating of the electrical service to current standards, and installation of a backup generator for the additional pumps to address the needed resiliency being demanded by the storms of recent years. The new floodgates will be constructed on the basin side, the Sixteenth Street Detention Basin side of the levee, on the west side of Kerper Boulevard, which allows for the, the pumps to operate more efficiently, eliminates the environmental concerns on the river side of the levee, and allows for operation of the existing facility, which is on the east side of Kerper Boulevard, to maintain flood protection during construction of the new facility. Instead of utilizing the two existing 90,000-gallon-per-minute pumps that are more than 50 years old, the new facility will have four 90,000-gallon-per-minute pumps. This allows for redundancy in the event of a pump failure. In concert with the Bee Branch Creek Restoration Project, including the Bee Branch Railroad Culverts Project, the proposed project improvements will provide a system that can accommodate the flooding that occurred between 1999 and 2011, flooding that has resulted in six presidential disaster declarations due to public and private property damage, flooding that has impacted more than 1,300, 300 homes and businesses. It also provides for additional resiliency options as rainstorms increase in both depth and intensity. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approve the planned specification, form of contract, and construction estimate of the Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation project. Do we have any public input on this item this evening? Seeing none here, anything virtually?
No. No input.
Thank you both. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. This is another one that's been a long time coming, so very excited to see this moving forward. It's still going to be a while, noticing that the final construction date is in 2027, but that's the way these things work, and it's good that we're going to be moving it forward from this point. Very happy to see it. All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? Not seeing anybody here in chambers. Anybody virtually?
Nope.
All right, and I think we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is Grand River Center, presentation of FY 2024 Annual Report.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
A move that we receive and file and hear the presentation.
Second.
Got a motion by Farber, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Leisure Services Director Marie Ware is sharing information for the OVG 360 Grand River Center General Manager Ryan Bonifus to give a presentation to the city council for the fiscal year 2024 Annual Report. Ryan will present activities in the last fiscal year as well as plans for the future.
Thank you, Mike. Ryan, you can come on up. Thanks for being here.
Marie shared how to crank this up, so we'll see.
Yep.
See how far we can go. Perfect, so I appreciate y'all's time tonight. Again, my name is Ryan Bonifus, I'm the general manager with Grand River Center, work for Oakview Group, and we're proud to be a part of our community here in Dubuque. You know, as many of y'all know, the Grand River Center is just a gorgeous venue, right? I mean, it's, it speaks upon itself. I've been fortunate to be able to go to many convention centers throughout the country over the years, downtown, Ocean View, and, but there's just something special about the Grand River Center and the Mississippi River. And it's a lot to do with what happened in this room two decades ago. Y'all spent the time to ensure that you were picking the right place and having that view and having that, taking that special time to ensure you did something unique and different. And since we've been here, we've put in a lot of effort. You know, we certainly have a great team, and a lot of that starts with the effort and care of our team, you know? Putting, putting together everything that we've done since we've taken over in April of 2023. My team will sit here and tell you all the time, I talk about effort and care. Without those two things, we can't, we can't accomplish anything. A lot of that starts with just the cleanliness of our, our building. I, I'm a big advocate of clean bathrooms. I've always told people, you can tell a lot about a venue, whether you're going to the local restaurants or even here, you can tell everything you want to know just by the bathrooms. And we start with our bathrooms and making sure they're clean. We got in here and we did our break rooms for our part-time, our back of house. If you've spent time with us, I know Marie and her team have come through, there's a difference. And it's important to us, you know, it's important for our part-time staff to ensure they feel good and comfortable where they are and that their feelings are going to go towards our public and our clients. Loading dock, you know, I've had multiple clients come to me and tell me, your loading dock is clean, you know, and that's a big deal for us, right? And I talk about cleanliness because I think it starts there, you know, and it starts and it goes through the rest of our building and how we take care of our clients. And what are they saying, you know? We do, after every event, we send out surveys, and our cleanliness report was 9.2 out of 10, you know, and that's a big deal for us. Courtesy of building staff, which again, I think is a part of the cleanliness and he goes towards it, 9.2 out of 10. Parking was 9.2 out of 10. You know, I know y'all come down there, it's free parking, it's, it's no big deal, but it's a big deal, you know? When people have ease of access into a building, they think about those stuff, and it cares. Free parking is a big deal to them, you know? Quality of food, you know, we're getting better, we're 8.2 out of 10. And, you know, I can tell you from the day that I got here till now, Chef Ray's done a great job in, in picking up that staff. He's got a lot of great part-time staff that do a lot of the food. And I know y'all come and eat with us a few times a year too, and I, and I hope you can feel the same way about what we're providing on the food side. And then the operations of the food has been a big deal as well, you know? When I first got there, it was a lot of stress, going out, 200, 300-person plated meal. It's, it's like the back of our hand now, and that's exciting, you know? We, this past November, we held the Attitude for Gratitude event with over 500 attendees, and we also had a reception upstairs. So we plated 800 meals in 90 minutes. And a plated meal, for y'all that don't know, we actually construct it in our kitchen, put the dome over it, put it in our hot boxes and take it to those locations. So within 90 minutes, we fed 800 people, and I know a few people were upstairs and downstairs at the same time, and they all acknowledged, not only was it fast, efficient, but it was quality food. So that was a, a big key for our staff that, that evening and building off of that. Other ratings, our client rating before events is 8.2 out of 10, and then we asked them, how do you feel afterwards? And that was an 8.5 out of 10. So they feel better after leaving our venue. Overall satisfaction for our events from our clients is 8.6 out of 10, and we're just building off of that, right? Sustainability is slowly becoming a part of what we are trying to accomplish up there, and as y'all know, it takes time, it takes effort and care to do those things. We started composting this year, since July of '24, we've diverted 1,875 pounds of food. And I'm very proud of that, and we're excited to start building on that number over the years. We're going through our backstock of plastic utensils with the intention of getting rid of plastic for throwaway food. We've already done that with our plastic straws, we now use agave straws, and at the end of the year, we hoping that all of the plastics out of the building for our throwaway. And then one of our, one of my favorite projects this past year was the micro garden. I think most of y'all are familiar with that project. We worked with Waller High School, local nonprofit, Re Evolution Foods, and then the city of Dubuque actually gave us a grant to ensure that happens. So you'll see those herbs and spices, or no spices, we're not raising spices, but herbs on your food as, as they come out. So that was a really cool project, and we're trying to see what else we can do, because we know the grant's coming up again here pretty soon. Economic impact, I mean, that's why a convention center's built, right? So this past year, the Travel Dubuque gave us the numbers for our events, $5 million of $54,887 generated from the Grand River Center. And that was done through 176 events with over 50,581 attendees with mini-signature events. We just held Special Olympics Iowa again this past week, which is always a, a great event. President Trump was with us this past year. Mini conferences, weddings, galas, and banquets, and conferences for the next year and what we did in the past. So also was very excited to be a part of the 20th anniversary for our beautiful building this year, as one of the first big events that we held. Many of y'all were there for our formal event, and then we held another event for the public with over 500 attendees that Saturday. So and then one of the things that's very dear to me is the volunteering that we do. You know, it's important to me and to our staff that we're not just the venue over in the port, we're not that third-party contract that City of Dubuque hosts. You know, being a part of the community is more than just being that venue that hosts your gala or banquet, you know? We try to get out as much as possible. I know we were with you this past summer, it was really hot that day, complete opposite of what it is today. So with Trees Forever, Dubuque Food Shelter, Riverview Center, Teresa Shelter, Humane Society, and many others that we have spent time with, our marketing and social media, as y'all, I hope all of y'all follow us. We try to have a little bit of fun, acknowledge staff. This past week, I had my entire staff behind me, including Rick, and all they said was, "Hi, Ryan," and I had to guess who they were. Fortunately, I went 10 for 10, so I hope that you can do that as well. So that was a lot of fun. Looking forward, excited about many, many new things. We appreciate y'all's pushing through to get the Marriott down in the port, we're excited about that in '27, we're excited about Daily Air. Certainly looking to collaborate more with Dubuque artists. I love art, I'm trying to get more in there, would love, trying to get into Call for Art this next year as well, to showcase our local artists. And then, you know, one of the things that we did this past year is we were recognized as the best convention center in the Midwest through North Star Group Stella Awards, hoping to, you know, we're certainly put in for that again this year. Sensory-friendly venue with Culture City is something we did a few months back, as well as we're looking towards having a permanent mother's room for our attendees. But none of this is, is possible without our great staff. So, you know, recently, this past year, we all obtained our CPR and AED certifications to ensure our guests are as safe as they can be and we can take care of them in their moments. We formed a crushing committee, and that just, our group comes together and we celebrate compliments, full-time, part-time staff, birthdays, et cetera, of items like that. Multiple staff members have obtained their Certified Wedding Planner certifications this past year. I was able to re-up my Certified Venue Professional Certification through International Association of Venue Managers, and then our Director of Events and Catering, Eliza Wilson, was just told this past week that she received a full scholarship for IVM's Venue Management School this past, for this upcoming summer, which is a great school that I was fortunate to be a part of about five years ago. And she did that through IVM's Foundation Women's Scholarship, so kudos to her on that. We're looking forward to many great events this next year. The second weekend of February, we're hosting a vet volleyball, it's called Vet, volleyball tournament. They're going to bring in 150, 140 registered teams, 60 of them coming, 60% more coming further than 50 miles away. So that second week of February, if you're looking to go to a restaurant, get your reservations now, there's going to be plenty of volleyball players. And we're also making a big push towards cheer and dance. You know, we're, we're consciously aware of these events, we want to make sure to bring them in, especially in these winter months where it's hard, traveling's hard, you know? If we're able to fill in hotels in the middle of the winter, that's a great thing for us, it's a great thing for the city of Dubuque. And Travel Dubuque's been a great advocate for us, trying City of Dubuque. And Travel Dubuque's been a great advocate for us, trying to push and have that further along. We have a new one coming in, Ovation Dance, the last weekend of February. One Dance is another one in April along with Midwest Stars. And even today, we were working on a three-day dance for this upcoming December. So certainly looking to push that and get those heads in beds here in Dubuque and have people to travel to our city, spend their money, want to come back and spend more time here in Dubuque. But we're not done. We're looking to push the envelope, try new things. We're going to fail, we're going to succeed, and we're okay with both. You know, we certainly want to succeed more than we fail. But we're excited about it, and more than anything, again, we're excited to represent our city.
Ryan, thank you very much. Definitely like what I'm hearing. Love to open it up for questions and discussion. Mr. Resnick, yeah, go ahead.
Yes. It surprised me when I heard this, that we were interviewing a candidate for a teaching position at this institution of higher learning. And this candidate said, the first thing I look at wherever I'm interviewed are the bathrooms. It's like, what? And but this person says, you can tell a lot about a place by the way they conduct, you know, how they, you know, do their bathrooms, whether it's in good shape, whether it's clean, because those, everybody sees those. And, you know, so anyway, we didn't get that person hired, but don't want to say anything about our bathrooms, but I mean, I know that that's, so that kind of alerted me to the fact that, I mean, you are aware of these kind of things and you're attending to those. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Russell?
Thank you. I appreciate your enthusiasm for the, for the center, and it's clear that you've made some great improvements there since you took over. But I really appreciate the fact that your staff gets out of the building and goes to make our community a better place and supporting all the organizations. That really means a lot, and thank you to you and your staff for doing that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Ms. Farber?
Who's the competition for the River Center?
I'm sorry?
Who do you view as your competition?
Locally, we have the Hotel Julian, The Q with their new meeting space, and then it could just be a litany of things, right? So sometimes it's, it's just the cost of doing business, the Holiday Inn, the Best Western, and then just spreading out. So we do have quite a few competitors in our market.
So it's not, in addition to Dubuque, is, are there other areas that people might go to as opposed to Dubuque? Are there cities around here that you know of that you'd like to market away from?
Yeah, I mean, recently, we've gone to a few wedding shows out of market to showcase what we, what we are and different. I mean, it's kind of what I tell my staff, everyone has seen our amazing view of the River Room overlooking the Mississippi River within 30 minutes, but had they seen that in Madison? Had they seen that in Corvail? So we're certainly trying to step out. But yeah, I mean, when you're talking about Iowa associations, you're competing against the entire state.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Wethel?
I will just say, I really appreciate the sense that you're trying to pull people in and have them get curious about your space. Even, I think it's Tuesday mornings in the summer and better weather times, you're trying to start a morning breakfast or coffee option, which I always walk too early to get your coffee. But I, I thought, wow, that's clever. They're trying to just get people curious about the space and get to feel like they're part of it. And so please keep doing all of that work. I've heard from the community, they're so happy to work with you and appreciate so much your professionalism. I think you display that a lot tonight when you talk about certifications, and I feel that that carries a lot of weight when we talk about what compares your venue to another venue. I appreciate that you're there to do the right thing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I already said, I like what I'm hearing. I really do. And, and I'll be honest with you, I'm hearing good things in the community about the work that you and your team have been doing. I, you know, we pay attention, we go to a lot of stuff. I'm hearing good comments and things moving forward. It's hard to break some of the habits that are formed, though, based on experiences that people had in the past, maybe that weren't so great or those kinds of things. You know, the Grand River Center's always been a beautiful venue, and it is such a great place. But I do think that over the years, there was people who kind of went away, and you mentioned there's a little bit more competition. So I think the work that you're doing is really, I think it's incredibly important. I love the Crushing It Committee. I think we need to, I think we need to make a Crushing It Board and Commission for the City of Dubuque. I think it's a great idea, has a really good one. Love the sustainability focus, Ryan. I mean, that is, and I think about the fact that we have our Growing Sustainable Communities Conference there, which is an international conference. I mean, there's a ton of attention on Dubuque at that time. To be able to have sustainability be a hallmark of the work you're doing, I think is really important for us as a city. So thank you for doing that. I'd be curious to hear a little bit more from you about the importance of hotels and air service. I, it did not escape me that you and your entire team showed up when the air service was announced at the airport. It was a big deal for you and the work that you do, but also about the hotels, and you already mentioned the Marriott that's going to be there. You know, I think it's the sense from this council that, from what the discussions that I've heard, that we need quite a few more hotels. We need a lot more places for people to stay for all the things that are going on. And I think it's been pretty clear that we need more air service, and we want to maintain what we have but then build from that. So I'd love to hear a little bit more from you on that.
Yeah, I mean, hotels are definitely a big part of what we do with the convention center and then, you know, ensuring that people are able to spend a good night in our community. And it's hard, right? You know, that's, that's uncontrollable for me. I can't control hotel rates. I can't control capacity. You know, Travel Dubuque does a great job with the Field of Dreams, and they do a lot of tournaments in the summer, so hotel rates go up, you know? And, and, you know, we do lose conferences and stuff because of hotel rates. Airport is a great thing. We're excited about that. It's, you know, hotel associations in Iowa is a little bit of a challenge because they're probably going to drive here instead of going to Chicago and then flying back to Dubuque. So we're still working through that, but we also acknowledge that that's step one in your plan for air travel.
Yeah. I appreciate your comments on that. I think it's important for people to hear it from your perspective. The hotel situation's a bit of a numbers game. We just, you get, you get more, and then you get more opportunity and more volume for people to be able to, to experience that, and the rates will be able to be more manageable when we have 500 teams at the Field of Dreams.
Sure.
Because that's a good thing, but we, we need more. We need more to be able to do what, what you need to do there. It is, it is a fabulous place. It's a, it's a really great facility, and I think you are doing a, I mean, even just based on the numbers you shared, I mean, your ratings are phenomenal. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. I totally agree with Ms. Russell. You're getting out into the community and doing these things, I think is really an important piece of this puzzle. Your desire to have local artists be a part of this. It just, the things you're saying are so much in connection with the goals and priorities and things that are important to this council and essentially important to the whole community. So thank you for being a part of the community and doing that, and continue the great work. This is definitely moving in the right direction, so thank you.
And I appreciate, and again, this is, I appreciate you saying me, 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 but it's certainly my staff.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you put a great team together, so thank you. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much, Ryan, for the presentation. The motion here is to receive and file and hear that presentation. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is proceedings to complete action on the issuance of $26,221,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes, State Revolving Loan Fund Program, Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project Phase 1.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Motion by Russell, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends City Council approval of the suggested proceedings, the complete action required on the $26,221,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes, State Revolving Loan Fund Program, Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project Phase 1, prepared by bond counsel and to present a resolution for City Council to adopt entitled, "Series Resolution Authorizing and Approving a Loan and Disbursement Agreement and Providing from the Issuance of $26,221,000 Sewer Revenue Bonds, Series 2025 Bonds, and Amending Certain Provisions." The Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project is the first of several improvements that are needed within the Catfish Creek Interceptor Sewer System to provide adequate capacity to serve existing development within the city and to allow for additional flow from future developments and the growth of the city. The Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project is being funded utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funding for the design portion of both Phases 1 and 2. The construction and construction engineering for Phase 1 and 2 will be funded utilizing State Revolving Loan Fund or SRF loan proceeds. The State Revolving Fund Loan will have an interest rate of 2.54%, maturity date of June 1, 2046, and will be abated from the Sanitary Sewer Fund. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. We've known about this project a long time and know that it's coming and knew that we were going to have to pay for it. So that's kind of what we're doing now. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is proceedings to direct advertisement for sale of $6,500,000 tax-exempt general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, $8,500,000 taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2025B, $9,250,000 taxable general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 2025C, approval of the preliminary official statements, and approval of electronic bidding procedures.
Mr. Jones moved to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolutions.
Second.
Good motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends City Council approval of the suggested proceedings for approving the advertisement for sale, preliminary official statements, and electronic bidding procedures for the $6.5 million tax-exempt general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, the $8.5 million taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2025B, and the $9,250,000 taxable general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 2025C. The $6.5 million tax-exempt Series 2025A bonds will provide $588,810 for fire ambulance replacements, $590,000 for fire cardiac monitors, $52,020 for fire outdoor warning signal, $90,000 for fire portable radio replacements, $53,822 for fire wireless headsets, $340,000 for fire boat replacement, $33,500 for fire community AED implementation, $1,021,700 for solid waste collection vehicles, $632,875 for airport taxiway improvements, $100,000 for fire station generators, $193,000 for fire station six roof replacement, $200,000 for fire station tuck pointing, $300,000 for fire administrative office update, $625,000 for fire bunk rooms, $54,961 for fire mechanical and electrical systems, $200,000 for fire HVAC replacement, $442,645 for fire station improvements, $466,676 for fire training burn tower improvements, and $514,991 for issuance fees and contingency for fluctuations in the bond market for interest rates. The $8.5 million taxable Series 2025B bonds will provide $2,090,000 for fire ladder pumper truck replacements, $457,000 for ABC Supply building deconstruction, $1,147,650 for ice arena dehumidification, $3,215,196 for smart parking system, $700,000 for parking ramp major maintenance repairs, $615,000 for federal building renovations, and $275,739 for issuance fees and contingency for fluctuations in the bond market for interest rates. The $9,250,000 taxable general obligation urban renewal Series 2025C bonds will provide $8,784,961 for the Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island, and $465,039 for issuance fees and contingency for fluctuations in the bond market for interest rates. Although the city is selling general obligation bonds to support the projects, repayment of the debt will be from local option sales tax, refuse collection fund, the Dubuque Racing Association, and Greater Downtown TIF. The bond sale will be held on February 3, 2025, and a letter from the attorneys detailing information on the bond advertisement is enclosed. A draft copy of the preliminary official statement prepared by Dorsey &amp; Whitney and city staff is enclosed. Careful review of the draft official statement by appropriate city staff and members of the city councils an important step in the offering of the bonds for sale to the public. The U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission has stated the issuers are primarily responsible for the content of their disclosure documents and may be held liable under the federal securities laws for misleading disclosure. In several recent enforcement proceedings, the commission has made clear that it expects public officials to generally review disclosure documents in light of their unique knowledge and perspectives on the issuer and its financial circumstances, or else to ensure that appropriate procedures are in place to provide the necessary review. Rule 15C 2-12 of the commission requires prospective purchasers of the bonds to obtain and review an official statement that has been deemed final by the city prior to submitting a bid to purchase the bonds. For this purpose, the official statement may omit certain information that is dependent upon the pricing of the issue, such as interest rates, bond maturities, and redemption features, but should otherwise be accurate and complete. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Resnick?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So Mr. Van Milligan, the, I was looking through the, and the information we got, and the municipal advisor is Independent Public Advisors of LLC of West Des Moines. Have we worked with them a great deal, or are they new?
No, they're not new to us. They're not new as a business. I think we've worked with them probably for about 15 years now.
So they're involved with us all year, not just...
Oh, yeah. As a matter of fact, I had extensive meetings with their representative, Tiana Poehler, this morning, because when we structure our capital improvement budget, debt financing is one really important part of these massive capital improvements that we do. And so she has to help us actually go through our funding mechanisms over the five years to help us determine, for instance, in the utilities like water and sanitary sewer and stormwater and refuges, what will the rate structures be required to support both the operations and the capital needs that we have, including the debt? And then it gets pretty complicated with that because you have to have what's called a debt coverage ratio. And generally, it's somewhere between 1.15 and 1.35. And those calculations are necessary and are done by our bond advisor for us to make sure that we can afford what we're recommending to the city council that we're asking you to approve to do.
Yes, and so much going on in here, and this is, this company is a big company, like they have more than 10 employees, and this is what they do?
Actually, no. It's a very small company. It was an individual who broke off about 15 years ago from a larger company that we were working with, and we had a great deal of confidence in her abilities, and she formed her own company, and we work directly with her as the owner of the company.
I see. And as part of what she gives as information, does she try to guess what, what perhaps Moody's might... what perhaps Moody's might decide upon, what is the, what happens as a basis of us going through this date?
So, I'm going to say yes, but I'm going to take the word "guess" out.
Okay.
Because she does a very sophisticated analysis in partnership with Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson, so they can analyze, based on past interactions with Moody's, what they will find acceptable as far as our debt load, our coverage ratios, and then what they will find, what, what we believe they want to know about our community and our organization as far as the demonstration that we're moving in a positive direction as a community, as in an organization, and that they can have a high level of confidence in our professionalism and our ability to achieve the targets and goals that we're setting, and that's how we have such a, such a good bond rating, is because of all that analysis that happens by our bond advisor and our chief financial officer, Jennifer Larson.
Now, this is the, the young woman who has actually been here several times.
Oh, yeah, she, she comes here about once a year to present to the city council, yes.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
What is the maturity date on these bonds? What's the length of time?
Yeah, I don't know, Jennifer, if you have an answer for that question at this point?
The reason I'm asking it, because we have a ladder of bonds, and so they, their maturity varies depending upon the year and the time set when you do issue bonds, and I'm just curious as to when the maturity date for this will be based upon when it goes to market.
Good evening, Jennifer Larson, chief, sorry. So, they have a 20-year life of the bonds.
And is that normal for the city?
Typically, we issue 20-years, sometimes we'll build in less. Some projects will have a shorter life depending on what the bonds are being issued for.
Okay, so according to our ladder, then this will be the longest term as of today, or as of February, that we have in our collection of bonds?
Um, yes, it will be, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. All right, thank you, Mike and Jennifer, for the extra explanation there. The motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is Historic Millwork District Outdoor Community Space Engagement, Design, and Construction Management Consultant Selection Approval and Authorization of Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank. Got a motion by Wethel, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Planning Services Director Wally Wernemann is recommending city council authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Confluence to undertake the Historic Millwork District Outdoor Community Space Engagement, Design, and Construction Management. In the event that a contract cannot be agreed upon with Confluence, authorization is also requested to negotiate and execute a contract with Snyder and Associates. On October 7th, 2024, the city council authorized the request for proposals for the historic district outdoor community space to be posted and initiate the consultant selection process. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Another exciting project to see moving forward, so this is a great step in this process, too, to be able to, to start moving, and I don't know about anybody else, but now that I'm, when I go down to the Millwork District now, I kind of imagine this a little bit differently. I, you know, got used to it being a parking lot for a long time, and it is fun to imagine something as a, as a green space there, and to see these pictures that were included in the information from, from Confluence as part of their application for this is, is really great. Looking forward to having more discussions coming forward. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is Work Session Request: Travel Dubuque Annual Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for February 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Second. Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are council member reports.
All right. We know it's cold outside, don't need to mention that, but any other reports this evening?
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So, I am very pleased to report that the FCC committee that I'm on, the, finally, was able to publish the report, and it has been published now on the FCC website, that you can find it, and it's basically talking about ways that state, local, and tribunal governments can be encouraged to develop best practices to facilitate the FCC programs, and amongst them is taking a look at the FCC programs, like the ACP and Lifelong Projects, that are currently, or have been in the past used, and how that relates to the contract arrangements that are found in many condominiums and apartment buildings nationwide, where they bundle services and are paid for through the community itself, but are not specifically identified as to what those costs may be, and therefore, some of the people on these programs may be challenged and maybe not be able to compete for that access. So, I just, in case anybody wants to take a look at these multi-tenant opportunities offered by the, the broadband providers and talk about the subsidies, it's really a fun read, and I hope you enjoy the read, and we are very pleased that we have the first of our documents published publicly that we can finally talk about, because these documents are, are private until they actually are published by the FCC, and they have been published now in January.
Well, thank you very much for the notice and your continued service on that.
It's a pleasure.
Ms. Rousell.
I had a couple of interesting opportunities. One was a day-long planning session with the Greater Dubuque Development. There was a wide range of people from the board there, and just talking about all the great things that have been done, could be done, with the Greater Dubuque Development. I also had the opportunity to attend emergency training, national incident management training with our former fire chief, Rick Steinis. Talking about having the person who has the expertise to tell you how things work was really very helpful. And lastly, I had the privilege with many of us here to attend the police awards night, and great to see all the, our policemen, the police officers there with their families, knowing that they give so much to our community to allow those, those officers to do their, their work. So, it was great to be able to be there, along with Susan, Rick, and Katie.
Thanks, Ms. Rousell. Mr. Jones.
That was a great night, I was glad to be there, really happy to share in that event. We said goodbye to Alex Dixon last Saturday night, but not before Friday, learning that SportsCenter probably would work on Schmidt Island with a fairly exceptional presentation on, with a lot of Alex enthusiasm to boot, so I want to build it. And went to a pretty neat little soup luncheon for the Iowa Association of Women's Police down at the Law Center last, last Wednesday noon, and that was worth attending, and they've got some good things getting ready to happen, including a conference they're going to host here in Dubuque. And I got to play at the library with David's fabulous jazz cube for a preschool event that was well worth being at, and even more worth playing at.
That's great. Thanks, Mr. Jones. Any others? Well, I had a few things. I, I did miss the, the police awards night this past weekend, I was gone, I'll talk about that in a second, but I'm sorry that I was unfortunately not able to be there, it sounds like it was a wonderful event, and I'm glad that so many were able to attend. Mr. Jones and I were both at the opening night for the Special Olympics, Mr. Jones was playing the, the drums once again, and I got to welcome the happiest crowd in the universe. It was just so much fun. I, I loved that night so much. It is, it is so much fun to be able to welcome the Special Olympics in the winter here, and I know that a lot of us have been involved in that. The, the DRA event was a wonderful one, to talk about the, you know, celebrating 40 years of the DRA, not only saying goodbye to Alex Dixon, but also recognizing what's coming up next. It is exciting to think about the possibilities of various different things on the island, so I'm looking forward to many more discussions there. And the GDDC planning event for the day for the board was, was very, very helpful, and I'm sure we will be talking much more about that in the, in the future here very soon as we start to actually form a strategic plan and think about what the next five to 10 years really look like there. Finally, I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting in Washington, DC this past weekend. It is their tradition to have it on inauguration weekend, which is an interesting tradition, considering the logistical nightmare that inauguration weekend is in Washington, DC, but they did a very good job. You know, it was an interesting meeting to have this year, so I just, I want to just kind of catch everybody up on some of the things that we did discuss. I told, I said this the last time that I talked about the National League of Cities meeting that we had, too. The general sense right now for pretty much everybody is, well, we need to kind of wait and see what the next few months bring, and then start to break into where that direction is going to take us, and I think what I can confidently say is that almost every city in the United States feels the same way. What I can also say is that I think that a lot of the congressional offices feel the same way, too. You know, I think, this is my first time in this role as mayor, and even as council member, in a, in a transition like this, to, to be looking at the presidential transition, and I think in this particular case, we're going to see a lot of turnover and a lot of changes in federal departments. So, the people we've gotten used to working with in the various different departments that we've worked with a lot, think Department Transportation, the, we've worked a lot with the, the Department of Transportation and the EPA and quite a few other departments, and we've got some great partnerships there. Some of those folks will remain in place, a lot of them will change, we need to get to know some new faces. So, one of the things I, I, one, one opportunity we do have is the faces that we're working with on, on Capitol Hill in our congressional offices, those have not changed much. There's a little bit of staff turnover in Congresswoman Hinson's office, or Senator Ernsting Grassley's office, but it's pretty much the same people that we've come to know. So, I was able to have meetings with some of those folks and talk to them about what's next. The one thing that I, I know, I can be confident in saying is nobody has a crystal ball in saying what the direction needs to be for how we go after grants, or what those grants are going to be, and those types of things. But what I did see was a general level of confidence that we are going to be able to continue to work together very well. We have great relationships with our congressional staff and our elected officials at the federal level, and, and I do not think that's going to change for Dubuque, so I was confident to be able to hear that. I think our goals and priorities are still very much on their mind and still, you know, matched to the things that they're going to be trying to do as we do get into more of the, the work being done after people get to know each other. But that getting to know each other phase is definitely there, and that's kind of what everybody's doing at the same time. So, it's nice to see the familiar faces we have, but we are going to be starting to meet some new people and starting to work with, with new people in the new administration, and I'm confident, given Dubuque's track record and history, that we're going to be very good at that, and we're going to, we're going to take care of that pretty quickly. I know that we'll be sometime this spring, traveling to DC together, hopefully as many of us as possible for the, the fly-in there. I know that the National League of Cities will meet out there again in March, as they always do, I do plan to attend that as well, and I know Ms. Farber will be there as well. So, you know, all these, all these opportunities to be able to continue our good work that we're doing here, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we're full steam ahead, we're going to keep on going, so looking forward to seeing what that all looks like in the next year. All right, we have a closed session, so I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Close session, and according to Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa, in order to discuss pending transfer to sale of real estate.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the items to be discussed in closed session is city attorney, Connor Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero, we are in closed session.[1789.32]